Seven o'clock and I will now call this meeting to order. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
Keep the flag.
The United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you all so very much. Okay. Up next, we have roll call. Ms. Martinez.
Hey, Councilor Broyles.
Here.
Councilor Carson.
Here.
Councilor Daniel.
Present.
Councilor Grego.
Present.
Councilor Hensley.
Here.
Councilor Beagle.
Here.
And Mayor Coleman.
Here.
Well, councilors present and a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have our agenda approval.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, none. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Councilor Grego.
Yes.
Councilor Broyles.
Yes.
Councilor Daniel.
Yes.
Councilor Beagle.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Councilor Hensley.
Yes.
Councilor Carson.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Up next, we have citizen comments. This is the portion of the agenda where we allow citizens to make comments. We do ask that you keep your comments within three minutes. If you are still talking at the three-minute mark, we will be timing the comments, by the way. If you're still talking, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that particular time. Ms. Martinez, will you please give any audience members instructions of how to unmute themselves and participate in the citizen comment section?
Yes, sir. So if you would like to speak right now and you are on the Zoom app, you can use the raise your hand feature to let me know you'd like to speak. Should be in the bottom of your screen. If you're on the telephone, dial star nine and it'll raise your hand for you. I don't see anybody raising their hand, Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised at this time. So since I don't see any hands raised at this time either, Ms. Martinez, I will now close the citizen comment and bring it back to our current agenda. And we're now on consent calendar eight.
I have a question.
Councilor Broyles?
Yeah, I just wondered why the financial statements were not put in on the consent calendar this time.
Hey, David, it's Lisa. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hey, my fault, that's why. I'm just behind and I didn't want to throw something out there when I don't have the bank reconciliation completely done. And I'd rather have it late and accurate than thrown out there too quickly. So just the changeover from Judy and then the gal who's helping out with me. She's been my maternity leave since the day I got here and I'm behind. So my apologies. They'll be there next time.
Lisa's been doing the job of two people, so.
All right, understand. Just wondered. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you, Lisa.
Most of the people cuts under a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No? Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilor Broyles?
Yes.
Councilor Hensley?
Yes.
Councilor Carson?
Councilor Carson, you're muted.
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Beagle?
Yes.
Councilor Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have a presentation from outside agencies, a presentation from Dr. Runda Epper, President of Trinidad State Junior College. Someone going to unmute her and allow her to.
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
Hi.
How are you today?
I'm doing well. Can everyone see me and hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor Coleman and council members. I want to thank you for allowing me to join you this evening. I am joined here by our Vice President for the Valley Campus, Jim Kiner. I think he is on the screen as well. And we are here to bring your attention to an issue that's been under discussion for quite some time within our college, as well as within a couple of our sister colleges in Colorado. And that is the issue of our name. We are proposing to drop the word junior from our name. And this is because we believe it is an outdated name and it's inhibiting our work to try and grow student enrollment. I think you were given a handout and I'll refer that to you now. It is titled Colorado's Junior Colleges. If you don't have it, I'll just summarize briefly a couple of the ideas that are presented there. And we had done some research when we started down this road and found out that there's about fifteen hundred, close to fifteen hundred, two-year institutions in the nation. And out of those fifteen hundred, only fifteen still have junior in their titles. Twelve of them are public institutions and three are private institutions. And out of the twelve public institutions, three of them are in Colorado. And that's Trinidad State Junior College, Otero Junior College, and Northeastern Junior College. Another thing we learned is that most of the colleges that have junior in their title were established very early on in the nineteen twenties, thirties, and forties. And Trinidad State is the oldest junior college or two-year college in the state of Colorado. We were established in nineteen twenty-five. Community colleges, on the other hand, were established mostly in the nineteen sixties and seventies. And this was during the great expansion of higher education following the GI Bill. Community colleges also represented a broadening of the mission from the early junior colleges, which were primarily transfer, to also include workforce education, adult literacy, and so on. And that's what you see reflected in Colorado with most of our community colleges that are named as such, being founded in the nineteen sixties and seventies. The community colleges in Colorado are not proposing to change their name at this time. It's just the junior colleges. And the reason for the proposed change at this time is really quite simply that we need to be able to attract more students. And the name junior carries a negative connotation for many students to question whether we're something less than a real college. A lot of students or prospective students don't know the history. They don't know why it's called a junior college. Is that something different than a senior college? Is it high school level? Is it between high school and college? And we want our name to reflect that we are, in fact, a real college. And we also know that the market for higher education is increasingly competitive. We have declining high school graduates in rural communities. And we need to be able to position ourselves as a modern institution with highly reputable programs, which we have. And in fact, we are also authorized in statute to offer selected bachelor's degrees in certain applied fields, which makes the name junior even more irrelevant for today. There's also kind of a stigma associated with having junior in our name. And we want to remove that so that students can feel proud of the institution they're attending or considering attending. So this change or proposed change to our name would require a change in statute. And we're going to be supporting legislation in the upcoming session to change the name of all three junior colleges in Colorado. So that would be Trinidad State Junior College, Otero Junior College, and Northeastern Junior College. And for all three, we would simply be dropping the word junior from our names. So our name would be Trinidad State College. So that is what we're proposing. We wanted to bring this to you today to ask for your support and to also just see if there are any concerns or questions that we can address.
And Dr. Epper, as someone who's heard this presentation, I want to just ask this question. So really, the only change that Trinidad is pursuing is dropping the junior. Nothing else is changing for the scope of the college or anything like that. I just want to make sure that's very clear.
That's correct. We're not proposing to change our mission. We're not proposing any other change, but just to drop the junior from our name.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, I like your reasoning and I agree with you. So I've always wondered why the name was always in there. So thank you for explaining that.
Thank you, Dr. Epper. I'm going to recognize some of the council members who have their hands up so that they can ask you some questions, okay? The first one is Councilor Daniel, followed by Councilor Grego.
Thank you. So I just have two questions and one of them could be born out of ignorance, so I apologize for that. I did not realize that you could offer full bachelor's degree, so thank you for clarifying that. Why did you choose to drop completely, like, and not add community instead of just removing junior? Because I think college implies four-year degrees for most of your degrees, and I just was wondering about that reasoning.
Sure. That's a great question. It is that the trend nationally is even for community colleges to drop the community from their names. The American Association of Community Colleges, which is our largest membership organization that supports two-year colleges, has a hundred or a thousand and fifty-one members. They usually fluctuate somewhere around eleven hundred community college members. Over half of them have dropped the name community from their names. And again, it's this stigma that is associated even with community. So if you think about some of the largest and most successful community colleges around the country, they have probably dropped community. So think about Miami Dade College in Florida, Valencia College in Florida, Lone Star College in Texas, even Dallas Community College has gone to Dallas College. It is, that's the direction it's moving. And so while we're not proposing that change or none of the community colleges in Colorado are proposing that change right now, we didn't feel like that step was necessary for us because of that trend nationally. And again, we're trying to remove that stigma that's associated with it and recognize that we are a college. And the credit that we offer and the degrees that we offer bear full accredited academic credit that's transferable to any four-year institution.
So the transferability, I completely understand. I think looking at the two different institutions of higher education we have in our community, how this will really compete with Adam State instead of how I think the relationship has been very symbiotic up to this point. I know there've been, you know, there's always challenges, I think. I just don't want it to be confusing and having, that's the part that concerns me, is just the potential confusion with having two within our own, like, a very small community.
Certainly. And of course, Adam State has a different name. They're Adam State University, not college. So I don't think there would be confusion there. And they also, if you look at this handout, you'll see the history of the name changes that have happened among four-year institutions in the state. And Adam State has changed their name four times throughout their history for similar reasons, to be able to better reflect their position in higher education, reflect what they offer and attract more students.
I agree. The concern I see is that CSU Pablo started out as a community college and now they're also a four-year institution. And so I think that is just a concern to me about, I know we were talking now about not scope creep or mission creep and that it's keeping. I just worry about that in the future in such a small region that I think we just have to keep in mind that. That's, it's just a concern I have.
Thank you. I completely understand that. We have no intention of becoming anything other than primarily a two-year institution. And we're not trying to change our mission. We're just trying to be able to attract more students and have a name that's more relevant and in keeping with today's times.
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation and hearing me. So thank you for that. I appreciate that a lot.
Okay. Next, we have Councilor Grego, followed by Councilor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Epper, the city of Alamosa and the San Luis Valley have been strong, strong supporters of Trinidad State Junior College all these years. And we would want to continue being a strong partner and whatever we could do to provide education for students, I think you got us in your corner. And whatever we can do to support you guys, we're there to help you out. So thank you. I don't see a problem with it. Sometimes different terms mean different things and get different reactions. So I think with our strong support behind you, I know you got mine. We can continue making this a successful college. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grego.
Thank you, Councilor Grego. Okay, up next, we have Councilor Carson.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Epper, for your presentation. I also support the decision to drop that. I think it's a good idea. And, you know, in touching on the point about going to four-year, I really don't think that it would behoove them, I was going to say, to go to a four-year college. I think the mission as is is pretty great. It does help people to maintain the ability to go get a degree and get into the workforce much quicker than a four-year degree. I myself have a degree from Trinidad State and I actually do think that the need for the two-year degree program is, you know, paramount in this community. So I support you fully and I think that, I think it's a good idea and a good direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Carson.
Thank you, Councilor Carson. Councilor Hensley, I thought I saw your hand up. Did you have any comments?
Actually, Councilor Daniel kind of covered the same area I wanted to cover, so I kind of got those questions answered. I do have the same concern she has. So, but at the same time, I really appreciate the answers and it makes sense.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, Dr. Epper and Mr. Crainer. I really appreciate you all sharing that helpful information with us tonight. And we wish you much success in all your endeavors.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Okay, council. Up next on the agenda, we have business brought forward by the city staff, Finance Resolution Number fourteen dash twenty twenty. Proposed budget amendment. Is that going to be you, Ms. Brooks?
Yes, sir. Just one second and I am sharing the screen. Can you see the Excel document that lays out this? So this is our last budget adjustment to kind of do the last cleanup of the year for the twenty twenty budget. Majority of these items are related to grants and CARES funding to make sure we have it reflected appropriately in the budget. I'm going to go very quickly, but of course, I am available, as is Lisa and any department head, if there's any questions. The beginning part of this is the changes to the general fund on the revenue side. And so you can see the biggest amount is five hundred and forty-seven thousand for the CARES Act. We have some prepayments of the SID. We've got a grant for Power Forward, C-Dot Main Street Grant, Marketing Board Grant, DOLA Mini Grants, the Training Foundation. Usually, once we get through the year, we can get some reimbursement for that training. C-Dot HVE Grant, DOJ Vest Grant, and FEMA COVID nineteen grants. The Community Recreation also received some grants that we are doing a budget amendment for those, that incoming revenue. So you've got the boat ramps, some mini grants, and then also CARES funding and CARES funding for the library. On the expenses, starting with the general fund, we have a budget adjustment for the legal division. Hiring some of those attorneys for console out of the front range has proven to be a little bit expensive. So we have a budget adjustment for that. We have some COVID adjustments for municipal court, HR, as well as finance. Additionally, we have the adjustment to finance because we, if you remember, we had Judy and Lisa having the crossover to do the cross-training. So we do need to adjust the salary slightly for that duplication of the position there. Non-departmental, we have, if you think through when we've talked about our CARES funding, one of the major categories was the downtown. So that includes a lot of different expenses. And so you'll see some of that here. We purchased outdoor seating, trash receptacles, bike racks for when we narrow Main Street from three down to two. We've got the utility assistance program, various equipment from the CARES grant. This Walsh Hotel fire displacement of five thousand currently reads that it will be funded from the CARES grant. But since drafting this resolution, we do not think it will be eligible. So instead, it will be five thousand from the fund balance. So when there is a motion made tonight, if you can just say, make that motion with Heather's clarification and we'll get that cleaned up. The downtown parklets that we also received a grant for and will be paid for from CARES Act, there are six of those for the restaurants. The, some work out on the ranch for the water retention system, the charging station that we've installed, the costs related to the art festival, purchase of art for the DOLA Mini Grant, and paying on the SID loan since we had some prepayments. For IT, we replaced the camera at library from the fund balance, COVID response expenses. Economic development, we've had COVID expenses. Police, we've had COVID expenses. The Training Foundation, overtime for police, and bulletproof vest from that grant. Fire, we have COVID supplies. The site monitor position for the site manager for the homeless situation at the hotel, if we have someone who tests positive or needs to quarantine. Other expenses related to CARES and the FEMA grant. Support services, which is police, we've got COVID nineteen expenses that will be covered by CARES funding. On streets, we have expenses related to COVID covered by CARES. We have the additional expenses that council directed us to do for the homeless campsite covered by CARES, as well as the traffic study and the safety barriers for the project downtown. From a building perspective, we have COVID expenses. And then we also have the construction of the office for the Economic Development Director, which looks fabulous. The parks, we have expenses related to COVID covered by CARES. Community recreation, expenses related to COVID covered by grants and CARES. We also then, for recreation, had the pumps that we replaced, the DOLA Mini Grant, CARES expenses, the boat ramp covered by a grant, the ADA door covered by a grant. And then the golf course had some minor expenses covered by CARES funding. So with that, I am available for any questions.
Mayor, I had one, if I may. Where, Heather, where on this, does it talks about the loans that we turn into grants that they're covered?
So Judy, when Judy was here, under one of the budget amendments we did, we already increased the budget by the amount that we actually ended up needing for those loans. So that had already been done in a previous budget amendment.
All right, thank you.
And for those of you who have comments, just go ahead and let me see. I'll see if I can see your hands now. Okay, all right. If anyone else have any comments of Ms. Brooks? I don't see any hands raised. So. Okay, Councilor Daniel.
Mayor, I move that we approved the, sorry, Resolution Number fourteen twenty twenty, the proposed budget amendment number four, by adding, also removing the five thousand dollars for the wash fire from CARES funding and making that from the fund balance.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? No? Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilor Grego?
Yes.
Councilor Broyles?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Beagle?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilor Hensley?
Yes.
Councilor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Up next on the agenda is selection of art purchases.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is one of the funner things that council gets to do. I just am so appreciative of this community and their continued support for the art program and the accolades that we continue to get when people are visiting town and that it is something interesting to look at and draw attention. You guys purchased a lot of pieces at the end of last year, the first of this year. So we don't necessarily have as much money. But we do have about six thousand left in our budget and we were successful in getting a DOLA Mini Grant for about five thousand. Now, the Mini Grant really likes us to stay to that ten thousand. So when we start looking at art, if you can kind of keep that in mind. As we've done in the past, we wanted to share with you which art piece won the People's Choice, and that was Art Betrium for six thousand, Tasha's piece. It's a moth. And then we also, as in the past, have asked the art committee what pieces they would recommend. And so their first recommendation would be Horse by Amias. And the second one is Sisters by Roberto. And the third one is Rusted Spire by Christopher Knight. And what I'm going to do now is share my screen. And we can look at the art pieces.
Like Rusted Spire, just saying.
Okay, so I covered those already. So here is Tree Branches. This is located by the railroad, the old railroad offices on Sixth Street. This is Head in the Clouds. Majesty. The Rusted Spire, which some have indicated they like. With wings like eagles. I think this is by Alamosa State Bank. I think that's where that one is. This one's in front of Hobby Town, the Tower Beacon. That's the Legos. This is Leanna over by Malagros. Lotus.
Did you say that one's made out of Legos?
The top part, the parts right here, is made out of Legos. Sisters, this is the one that was number two by Roberto. And this is the one that was number one by Amias. This one- And this is the one that was number one by Amias, this one's by the museum. Ancient Pillar, there's faces on there, you can't really see it very good in the picture. And this is the one that won People's Choice by Kasha. And then the ones that we still had in placement, and they're still available to purchase, Mountain Spell. Sundance. And it's not showing yet, because we just had a lot of people pull out at the last minute from the, those pieces that were picked, but this will, this is a bronze that will be placed downtown. It's a Blues Dog. And Spirals, which is obviously one of our more expensive ones. And Monolith, which is one of the more expensive ones. And with that, I can go back and forth at any of them and answer any questions.
Heather, real quick, can you show the top three that you all recommended, real quick?
Okay. Okay, so this one wasn't one of the top three. This was People's Choice, which was Kasha's piece. And then, number one was Amias's piece, which is called Horse, this one's by the museum. Number two was by the committee, was by Huberto and its sisters. Kind of over, I want to say, by Moll Smith and Bateman, no, we're Friday Health now. And third was the one that Counselor Carson indicated that he likes, which is the Rusted Spear.
Okay, thank you. Okay, counsel, are we to make a selection right now? How do you want us to do that, move forward, okay? All right, counsel, what are your thoughts?
So, Mayor, if I may, if Heather could remind us, I believe we are, the city, not we counselors, but the city already owns pieces by Huberto and Amias. Do we also own one by Kasha?
Yes.
Okay, are, do we own, what are, who are the artists of the other pieces that we own?
Um, so, so we definitely, none of the, so we do not own the artist who's done the Rusted Spear.
Thank you.
So, if you wanted to go off of that list, I don't remember, I'd have to open up the brochure on like the Rocket Ship. Kasha's husband is the one that did the sun, the windmill. We own one by Kasha, we own two by Amias. And Huberto was the first piece that we ever purchased in front of the Welcome Center.
And, and I, so, two, I have two different thoughts on this, counsel. The one is, I would love to continue to buy local art, and I think that's very, very important. The other is, I don't think we should have just one type of artist. And so, really looking at the pieces that we're buying, and I know the last time we purchased art, we did a really good job of being eclectic, the Rocket Ship, and so I just wanted to remind us of that. I do support the Rusted Spire. I actually really like Kasha's piece as well, the moth. And then I really liked Amias and Huberto's pieces. I always loved theirs. I just, I want to make sure we're not buying all of the same art, all of the time, by all of the same artists. It was my only, my only thought to add.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel, appreciate that. Hands that are raised, we have Counselor Vehoe, followed by Counselor Hensley, and then Counselor Grego.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just quick, we have ten thousand dollars to spend, correct?
Okay, so. Technically, you have eleven, but the grant people would prefer for us to keep it closer to ten.
Okay, so I think we can all agree on spending ten thousand. And I agree with Ms. Hensley, that last time we did this, we chose a lot of different types of art, and we were able to get a lot. But I do kind of see it differently. Especially with Umberto and Amias. I kind of like that, we kind of have a theme going a little bit. If you all recall, the very first piece that we bought was the Buen Pastor, which is the Good Shepherd, that's in front of the Welcome Center. And I, I would really like us to, I do understand what you're saying, Ms. Daniel, about being different and giving other people opportunities and that. I just like the theme that we got going with our artwork downtown and across the city that we are paying homage to our agricultural and ranching roots. And I, I would really like us to go with the, for sure, the horse. And also, I kind of like going something super different, and that's that Lego piece, the beacon. And it's only eight hundred dollars too, so, but I would, I would for sure be on the horse. Those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vehoe. We have Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor Grego, followed by Counselor Carson, and then Counselor Brawls. Counselor Hensley?
So for me, I kind of see all ideas in that. I could pick some ones, some of the ones that are not by ones we've already bought from. But I, out of the ones that are local, my favorite honestly is Sisters. I think that's real, I, for some reason, that really hits well with me. And so my thought, I guess if I was to throw it out there, but I'm pretty open-minded, would be the Sisters, then the Spire or Spear, and then the Legos, which I think still all adds up to just under ten thousand. So, that's what I would throw out, but again, I'm not necessarily married to any of it. It gives us a little bit of local, something by somebody new that was recommended, and then something that fits in the budget, but is also different.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hensley. I hope somebody's taking notes, so we can sum this up here a little bit. All right, next we have Counselor Grego, followed by Counselor Carson, followed by Counselor Brawls.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with Heather that this is so inspirational, that program like this has taken off and, and it continues to grow and grow and enthusiasm. Not only I, here in the city of Alamosa, but I think the whole San Luis Valley and even parts of northern New Mexico that people are seeing this and that, that we're involved in it. And I agree with Counselor Vehoe that there is a theme out there. And this being the San Luis Valley, that we should follow something. And by the same token, I, I don't disagree with maybe adding some other different pieces of art. But my two are, and I don't, it goes over a little bit, is Sisters and, and the horse would be my two recommendations. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor Grego. Up next, we have, let me see here. We have a Counselor Carson, followed by Counselor Brawls.
Um, I, I'm not, I'm not really married to anything either. I, I like Spire, I like Sisters. I like the horse too, so I'll support whatever you guys want. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Brawls.
Yeah, my three favorite would be the horse, the horse, the wings, and the rusted spire.
Okay, all right, good, good. All right, and I guess if I had to chime in, I, I like the Sisters, Rusty Spire, and With Wings. So, I'm not for sure who's been tallying up some of our thoughts, but we should have.
Can we see the With Wings one? Oh, thank you.
Take the most votes, Mayor, are Sisters, Horse, and Spire.
Okay, all right.
We don't have enough money for all three, right?
Correct.
Unless you guys want me to go over budget.
No.
How, how much would we be over budget if we did do all three? I'm just curious.
Um, it would be two thousand four hundred over budget.
Okay, so I'll just, I just.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Counselor Carson.
Would that, would that two thousand dollars appease the scenarios for every, for the three, for the three counselors that we're talking about buying local? And then, you know, moving forward, would that appease everyone?
I really don't want us to go over.
Me either, I'm just asking.
Okay, so it looks like we have, Counselor Brawls has his hand up. Go ahead, Counselor Brawls.
What were the three recommendations again?
Sisters, Horse, and Rust.
Sisters, Horse, and Rusty Spire? I can, I can support that.
But that's over budget though.
Yeah, but that puts us over.
Within our budgets, which, which two do you all want to settle on within our budget?
I'd like to see Sister and Horse.
That's over budget too.
Looking through real quick, you guys give me a second one too. I mean, give me a second.
I, I don't think, I don't have a problem going two thousand over budget.
Okay.
I mean, that's pretty minor.
Neither do I.
So, let me see if I have any hands raised, and then I'll, I'll chime in to make sure. Okay, Counselor Daniel, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. I am not comfortable going four hundred or two thousand dollars over budget. I won't, I won't vote for those purchases. And so, but I would support Sisters and Rusted Spire. And then we could get the Lego one as well, because that would still be under budget.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Hensley.
I agree with Counselor Daniels.
I guess I was gonna say the exact same thing she did. I like it because it picks two out of the three that were recommended. Adds something that's a little eclectic and something a little different, which adds to what we've been doing. So it gives us sort of that idea of a flow, for those that really want things that are similar and that really show our community, but then also shows some differences as well. So I, I would do exactly what I guess I initially suggested, and then what Counselor Daniel suggested too.
Okay, awesome. So, Counselor Carson, you have your hand raised?
I just wanted to agree, but I didn't want to be rude.
Okay, thank you for raising your hand, I appreciate that. All right, so, it looks like, and appears, that you all may have come up with three different pieces that will fall within our budget. If someone would like to recommend that, or if we have to make a motion, do whatever is required, we can do so right now.
I'll make a motion that we are so moved.
I'll second that we're gonna do Sisters, Spire, and I know it's not called Legos, but Legos.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, Counselor Vehoe?
I don't, I would rather we, I would rather we do Horse instead of Sisters.
So, before we go through this motion, I think we need to come up with a consensus between the Horse and the Sisters. Those of you who would like the Sisters, just raise your hand like this, so we can be counted. Okay? All right, and then those who want the Horse, raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Looks like we have more voting for the Sisters, Counselor Vehoe. All right, so that motion will stand, and we have a second. Counselor Brawls, I see you have your hand raised, did you want to say something?
Well, I was just gonna say, I don't agree with the selections, but that's fine.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, a second, no further discussion. We've identified the three pieces. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles? Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Vehoe?
No.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried back to two with Counselor Broyles and Vehoe casting the no votes.
Thank you so very much, and thank you, Ms. Brooks, for bringing that, those selections to us. It's, it's always good to have a challenge when it, when we're trying to pick out something. That means that we have a lot of creative pieces to choose from, and we're not gonna always agree, but it's okay. We're gonna move forward and be thankful for the opportunity we have with the pieces that we are able to buy this year. All righty, so, that moves us on down the agenda to the next item, to approve the Animal Shelter Contract with Denver Dumb Friends League.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a quick work session in case council had some different questions on this item. It is a really big and exciting project for our community. We're really excited that the Denver Dumb Friends League has picked Alamosa in an attempt to spread their wings into the rural communities of Colorado and make a difference for pets and animals. It, our struggles with our animal shelter began in twenty sixteen when the building really needed a lot of repairs, the city and county partnered to, to build a bathroom, so they didn't have to use a portage on. But at that point in time, the property owner had indicated that he was only comfortable letting the youth stay there for another five years. So that put us on the clock to try to build a new animal shelter by twenty twenty one. Darius Allen reached out to the Denver Dumb Friends League to find out if they had ideas on how to do fundraising, what the facility should include, those types of items. It happened to catch the Denver Dumb Friends League right at the time they were talking about adding a facility in a rural community. So we were really fortunate that he made that phone call. In twenty nineteen, we received an invitation to, to meet with the county and the Denver Dumb Friends Leagues. They have spent, you know, over a year working with local groups that work with animals in the valley and, and being very open and transparent in building partnerships. And their building that they have constructed now is almost complete, the exterior is done. I'm not sure how much of the interior. I think, though, probably within the next few months, it should be close to being finished. So the last piece that the Dumb Friends League wants to put into place is to have what they call an umbrella contract with just one agency here in the valley. And after talking to the city and county, we decided that it might make sense for the city of Alamosa to be that umbrella contract. Our, um, but how that would look is if residents or our officers bring strays to the shelter, they would be allowed to do that, and then the shelter would charge us. Now, Alamosa County is interested in allowing strays from the county to be able to be taken to the shelter. So we would look at a subcontract with Alamosa County, and then any other municipality or county in the valley. So if La Jara or Canejos or any other local government wants to have a contract, we would do a subcontract. It's all the same rate, and you only get charged for the animals that are brought in from your jurisdiction. In regards to the cost, currently with the Humane League, the city was paying approximately twenty four thousand. It was a flat rate, and that was only for dogs, because they did not take in any other animals. The shelter is obviously larger, it's gonna take cats and some other animals and have more services that are gonna be available. So the cost, we anticipate, will go up slightly. It's about a base fee of a hundred dollars as estimating a stay of five days, which, based on the projections that they provided us, we think it'll go from our flat twenty four thousand to an annual cost of about thirty two thousand. The Denver Dumb Friends League is still picking up the majority of the operational costs for this facility. And with that, I will turn it over to council for any questions.
Okay, thank you so very much, Ms. Brooks. So, I have a hand raised, Counselor Carson.
Um, if there are no questions or comments, I'd make a motion that we approve.
Second.
The contract.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If so, raise your hand. Okay, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote? Okay, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. Uh, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Uh, Counsel Carson?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Veho?
Yes.
Counsel Broyles?
Yes.
Counsel Grego?
But it keeps voting yes.
My, my, sorry, my dog is barking his head off. The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, thank you, uh, very much, Ms. Martinez. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is to discuss the appropriate region, uh, for distribution of potential opioid settlement funds. Is that going to be our city attorney?
It is, thank you, Mayor. Um, there was a fairly thorough discussion in the materials, so I won't try to repeat all of that, but if any of you have any questions, certainly feel free to, to bring them up. The thumbnail overview is we, we, the community of, of people involved in multi-district litigation on the opioid front are expecting that there's going to be a potential for a proposed, uh, global settlement of approximately 3,000 nationwide opioid cases. And the structure of that is looking like, um, making payments to states based on a formula about how the states are impacted and then having the states distribute, uh, those settlement funds to various jurisdictions within the state. And the Attorney General has been, uh, holding stakeholder meetings and spearheading discussions about what that should look like. Uh, the, the overall structure would be that money would be distributed about 70% of the funds to a regional entity that within the state that would, uh, use that money to set up ways in which to address opioid impacts. Whether that be medical assisted treatment or counseling or, uh, various, uh, other ways to address those impacts. And 15% or so would go to individual jurisdictions, counties and cities. 15% would, uh, be held by the state. Those are just rough numbers. It's all theoretical right now. But the issue before counsel is assuming that that will be what the structure more or less looks like. What is an appropriate region for Alamosa to be in? And, um, and the, the, the materials contain a summary of arguments for a larger region and for a smaller region. And when I say larger region and smaller region, I'm gonna screen share here. Materials that the Attorney General shared in these meetings. The Attorney General had proposed this first map, which as you can see, uh, includes Alamosa County within this larger region of Southeast Colorado, including Pueblo County. That provides a larger raw number of dollars for funds, significantly larger, on the order of 1.2 million per year versus a smaller region, um, proposed by the Colorado counties on, on the order of about 200,000 per year. This one would, it would tack Werfino County into the six counties of the valley. You could also do a region that, well, this is really essentially the same as the Attorney General's proposed map. You could do a region that did not include Pueblo, um, and separated these valleys, the, these, this San Luis Valley and Werfino from southeastern Colorado. So the, the issue really is, uh, one of local control and responsibility versus economies of scale that would get you sufficient dollars to actually accomplish something if you couldn't, you couldn't accomplish it on your, on your own in a smaller region. And let me stop the screen share. As I indicated, really the, the issue, um, for whether a smaller region, which I think everybody thinks is more desirable from a local control and flexibility standpoint, whether there really is enough funding there coupled with our existing infrastructure, uh, to make a go of it, to, to actually do something reasonable with that funding to mitigate the impacts of the opioid crisis here in the San Luis Valley. We did, by we, I mean, the, the city staff did try to convene, uh, electronic email discussion with other localities in the valley. And the overwhelming response that we got from other counties and other municipalities in the valley was that they preferred a smaller region. They thought that we did have sufficient existing, uh, strong partnerships in healthcare and law enforcement and, and nonprofits that we could stand up some effective opioid response just with, uh, the, the smaller amount of funding that would be available to our smaller region and that we wouldn't. By doing so, we would avoid the problem of A, having to get clients back and forth over the Vita Pass if we had the larger region, because if, you can bet that if we have the larger region, the bulk of the treatment facilities are gonna be centered in Pueblo. I mean, that, that's what's gonna happen. So we wouldn't have that transportation issue. We would have, we would have the, the more local control issue and, uh, the thinking is we would have enough funding to be able to accomplish something. Um, we do wanna get back to the Attorney General's, uh, task force on opioid response with what counsel's preferences for what, uh, the region that would encompass Alamosa should look like. And so that's why this issue is before you this evening, um, to give counsel's direction on preference for, uh, what we should designate as a regional area for, uh, opioid response.
And if I can, um, Counselor, can I, I, there's two important pieces I feel that we need to share. The first one is that the, the, the money's not gonna necessarily flow to communities, that there's going to be a board that is created for each region. So even if we create a big region or a small region, there's gonna be an oversight board. And then that board will evaluate how they think the fund should be used and then distribute the funds to those areas. And so it's not necessarily our money type of thing. Um, so that's, I think, an important part. As I met with some of you, that was a, a question that was asked. The other part is when Eric talked about reaching out to the cities and counties, also on that email list where the providers. So it, it was also anyone who would potentially touch how those funds would be used, either from an education preventative type aside to treatment, to, to case management, to, to, so any of our community partners in the valley that would be involved in that, the email did go out to those as well.
Okay, well, it looks like we got a lot of hands raised. Uh, so here comes the questions to, for you all, okay? Here's the order so far. We have Counsel Daniel, followed by Counsel Carson, followed by Counsel Hensley, Counsel Veho, then Counsel Brawls so far. So Counsel Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I, um, feel fortunate to have been a part of this conversation with the different hats that I wear, um, as well as the, you know, bringing part of the city perspective. And so I, um, am not in support of the larger region. However, I think it is important that counsel understand with our current infrastructure locally and the resources we have, this will just be doing a little bump of services and infrastructure we have. It's not gonna make dramatic differences. We know $200,000 in a region of six counties and if we count Werfino, which I don't think we should, but if we did, um, that, that's not going to be a huge shift in what we do. It would have to build on things we already have. And then my personal argument for the oversight group would be to utilize structures we already have somewhat in place. Now, it could be a different kind of subset, but there are lots of partnerships that already happen. There are lots of things that happen well um, in our communities and lots of great conversations that happen to support them. The other piece to consider is there are some smaller, kind of more grassroots organizations that should be considered maybe with this money because 50 to $75,000 in a smaller organization will make a much bigger impact than it necessarily would for like an organization like SLV Health, Valleywide, or even the Behavioral Health Group, although it would help with all of those services. Maybe we need to look at some of our smaller organizations, bumping them up because that dramatic difference would be huge in their budget where it wouldn't be a major, major impact in some of our other bigger partners' budgets. However, that being said, the bigger partners could always use more funding to enhance and increase their services. So either way, I think there's infrastructure in place and organizations that could use this funding to do well. But I personally disagree with it being larger than the San Luis Valley.
Thank you, Counsel Daniel. Um, Ms. Brooks, I see you were trying to, uh, make a comment.
I just, um, also the, the slide that Eric showed did have Werfino, but when we were on the phone call, many from the valley mentioned that they don't think Werfino should be a part of it. So as counsel discusses this, if they could also be clear on that point as well, as far as if there is interest in the smaller, is it the smaller without Werfino? Um, so if we can make sure we're clear in, in that part of the discussion as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, up next we have Counsel Carson, followed by Counsel Hensley.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, uh, and I think Heather just clarified it, but so, um, we would be supporting, I was gonna make a motion if nobody had comments, but obviously we do, but I was, we'd be supporting case study number two minus Werfino, which is the last slide you showed, right, Eric? The, it's the purple area minus Werfino County.
Think you're muted, uh, Mr. Sweezo.
It could be that you are recommending that we just do the six counties that are in the SLV.
Okay, alright, that's what we'd be doing. Alright, yeah, that, I agree with, with Counsel Daniels. I, I support that. I do not support the larger region, so just, just that being said, uh, that's it. I just wanted to make sure on the map, but, uh, that's it. I'm, I'm fine with what we wanna do, so whenever anyone's ready, we will make a motion.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Counsel Carson. Up next, we have, uh, Counsel Hensley, followed by Counsel Veho.
I'll just make it quick too, is basically what Counsel Daniel said, is I support that. I think even if Pueblo gets the, or the area that has Pueblo gets the $1 million, it's not gonna funnel down or be as focused in on the San Luis Valley. And the challenge we have is a lot of services that are offered in other places besides the San Luis Valley, people can't get to. And so even if it's not a major change, it, we're, all of these things add up together. So we're already on some paths that were better than five years ago. And as much as I would love to have everything the big city has right now, we at least are making differences and we continue to make those differences and this 200,000 will add that bump and it all adds together to help out our community. And I'm all about keeping, getting the funding and the support directly to our community to help our community, even if there's an oversight, but it's still be focused on our community. Thank you. Oh, and no, uh, no Werfino.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Hensley. Counsel Veho, followed by Counsel Brawls, followed by Counsel Grego.
Thank you, Mary. I agree too. It should be a, a, a smaller area. We should take out Werfino. And as far as like an oversight committee, I am way for that. I mean, I don't think I'm qualified enough to make decisions like that and where that money goes. It's not our money, by the way. And I would like it to, I, I would say I would like some of that. I hope that that money gets to the, the other areas in the valley and, um, what else was I gonna say? Uh, I wanna build upon what Ms. Hensley said, that four or five years ago, we had a huge outcry from folk that the opioid problem was huge in our area and you need to start doing something about it. And this is just another tool in the toolbox. We have the LEAD program. Our law enforcement is going after, um, some of these dealers and the trafficking of it. And now we're going after, we, getting onto this litigation, we went after Big Pharma. So we're doing everything we can down here to help folks with the opioid problem. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Veho. That brings us to Counsel Brawls, followed by Counsel Grego, followed by Counsel Carson.
Yeah, I was gonna say, basically what, uh, Counsel Hensley said. So she said basically what, what I was gonna say. So I'd support what she said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Brawls. Uh, Counsel Grego, then Counsel Carson.
I also agree that we should stay small and, uh, but without Werfino, what I was trying to, uh, and I think, uh, Chris makes a good point is, uh, the amount of money that is coming in, I think it would support an existing group that's trying, that already has some kind of mission going versus a Valleywide or a big organization. So I, instead of creating some kind of a board, if there was a way that we could direct those funds where the best shoes would be able to be, to be used in, uh, you know, to, like she says, 200,000 is, is, it, it's money, but, but to a small group that already has, uh, is, is doing this grassroots deal, I think this would really go a long, long way. So my direction would, would be not to even create any kind of board, but to funnel those funds to these, uh, smaller groups somewhere. And I don't know how you go about doing that.
There has to be a board, Counsel Grego.
There would still have to be a board that would funnel it.
Well, that's gonna be part of the state required structure that, that would keep, uh, the state legislature out of monkeying around with us. So, uh, we can talk about how that is, is gonna look at a different time. Really, the only issue right now is what should the shape of the region be? And again, this is all, um, hypothetical because we don't have a settlement in hand, but we're trying to lay the groundwork for getting things up and running, uh, assuming that one does it eventually, a global settlement with the opioid manufacturers and distributors come through.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Counsel Grego and, and Mr. Sweezo. Okay, Counsel Carson?
Uh, I would make a motion that we support the region consisting of six counties minus Werfino.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussions? Um, I just had one brief comment. I, I'm in favor for the local control because of the flexibility, accountability and the wonderful partnerships that we have in the valley. Uh, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counsel Carson?
Yes.
Counsel Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Veho?
Yes.
Counsel Broyles?
Yes.
Counsel Grego?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, counsel. And Counsel Carson, you have your hand raised? You're muted, Counsel Carson.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Counsel Daniels, I just wanted to say that, uh, I, I really appreciate your comments about the, the money being funneled to smaller entities and, uh, if you do, I, I thought you said you sit on that board. If you do or you can sit on that board, uh, I, I think it would be a great idea, especially to smaller programs like LEAD, uh, for what they've done. So I, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Carson. Appreciate that. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have, um, on the agenda to give the staff, uh, direction on enforcement of COVID-19 dial level red in light of the state's SB 200B 001 Small Business Relief Program.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, COVID is just the gift that keeps on giving. I'm sorry that we have to have these discussions. But it's, it's a situation where we, we didn't wanna not bring it before counsel and then miss out on an opportunity. Um, and we wanted to make sure you guys had the information. And so as you are aware, they went into a special session, session, they passed several items of legislation related to COVID. And one of the items is the Senate Bill 20B dash 001. Um, there's a lot of different parts in it. Um, some of it is not related to what we're here tonight. The part that we're here tonight on is the assistance to small businesses. Most specifically, it would be rest, the types of businesses that are eligible are restaurants, bars, caterers, movie theaters, gyms and recreation centers. And it's only in communities that have been on the most restrictive, um, areas of the dial. Which at this point is a lot of the state. Um, So what this would mean is that there is funding available that they can funnel to the community. And then somewhat similar to our loans, except it's a grant program. Um, it would then go out to those eligible businesses. Now, there is criteria set out on what the, um, business has to show in regards to be eligible. And the amounts are lower than what we did for our business loan slash grants. So they range from three thousand five hundred to five thousand, to then seven thousand. Depending on their gross annual sales. And so, um, it's not necessarily a lot, but I can tell you from working with the businesses on the grants. Um, three thousand or five thousand could cover their rent in fixed overhead for three or four months. So, um, it is something. However, um, I think part of the reason council made the decision that they made prior to Thanksgiving on the enforcement. Was the thought that if restaurants and bars are open, then they're able to maintain some revenue coming in. And so the question that we wanted to figure out for council tonight is, is two pieces of information. The first one is, how much do we even think we would get? Because it's based on how many are gonna participate in our population. And so the minimum that we would anticipate getting is fifty one thousand. Deacon did do a rough guess of like, if we list these businesses and we're assuming their sales are this. So this is a bit of magic behind the scenes, what would they be eligible for? So we think there could be a need of about a hundred and twenty seven thousand. So if there's other communities not taking advantage of it, then I don't know if that means more will funnel towards the communities that are. I don't know, but we may only be looking at fifty one thousand. Um, and then we would have to split that, um, for the, for the businesses. The other piece of information we wanted to find for council, um, in making this decision is. How many businesses are taking advantage of your vote? How many are operating in orange and, and have had in person? And so Erin, um, with the chamber and Kathy as our economic development director, have reached out to all the businesses. And no one has been taking advantage of it, they've all been very appreciative of, of council's desire to support them. And, and recognizing the impact that this has on them, so they've all been very, very appreciative. But at the same time, knowing that they could still risk their license. Because that if someone were to call the state on them, and, and there could still be enforcement at that level. So none of them have taken advantage of that. Several of them did share that they received letters from the state, making sure they understood what level they should be operating at. And even smaller number indicated that they received a call from the state. So, um, it, it seems like the state from an education perspective is, is staying on top of that. With their communication to the businesses. So tonight, council, um, staff does not necessarily have a recommendation. I did hear from Gigi with the county that they will not be, um, participating. Which then does make the city eligible. Um, so i- if the county was participating, then it would just be going through the county.
Heather, why aren't they participating?
So the county's decided that, um, they're not participating because of, they feel like it might be a lot of work. Um, we've taken a look at it, um, I don't think it's any more work than, than what we did with our business loans. And since we already kind of have that set up, well, we'll tweak the application and, and that kind of stuff. Just, we're up, we got the wheels up and spinning already, I guess is what I'm trying to say, we're not reinventing something here. So, but as it stands, there's language in this bill that says if you are not doing reasonable enforcement. At the level you're at, you are not eligible. And by council's vote, that would mean that we're not eligible. So that's, we can stay, um, and, and stay with the direction that council gave. Or council wants to change, we do feel that how we have historically done enforcement would qualify. So again, we would not necessarily look to change and, and it would be the education, it would be the communication. It would be the, you need to adjust this and the warnings and, and those types of things. So we don't think it needs to be anything different than what we had done historically for the other levels that we were at. Um, but again, it's up to council. And so we wanted to, we wanted to share that information with you and let you know that there is this funding opportunity there. Um, that it would require a, a different direction on enforcement.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Brooks. We have, uh, once again, several hands raised, and I will call you all in order of your hand being raised. Counselor Hensley, followed by Counselor Daniel, then Counselor Brawls.
So I was definitely one of the ones supporting not enforcing red, but to enforce orange. Um, I also spoke to quite a few restaurants, probably not as many as Kathy and Erin did. But at the same time, just got a feel, and like you said, Heather, is lots of support for where we stood. At the same time, we want to do everything we can to support these restaurants. And as much as they'd like to be open, they are nervous, most of the ones that are not open, it is because of the worry of what the state would do. And so with that, they're running into some major challenges. And so I would like to do whatever we can to support the restaurants, if that means they can get some extra grant money. Um, even if it's not big buckets of it, at least it helps, it gets them through, hopefully that maybe by January or something, we might move back to orange anyway. We'll see, I mean, obviously I'm just hopeful. Um, but so with that, since nobody's really taken advantage of what we put out there a few weeks ago. I would go with the idea of going back then to enforce whatever color it is in the way that we've done it. Um, so that it can open up some money for these restaurants that are staying closed anyway.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Hensley. Okay, up next, we have Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Brawls.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with, uh, what Counselor Hensley said, so I'm not going to repeat that. My only question is, um, because we were the way we currently are for all, like, three weeks now. Does that put this opportunity at risk for us?
No, no, it doesn't, the language of the statute is that we have to be in compliance with public health orders. As of, well, so if you ask me, it's as of the time we make the application. If you ask DOLA, it's as of December thirty first. But in, in either way, if council changes its enforcement, uh, directives. With, at this meeting, we would be in compliance.
And I just, I, I want to say, I feel like we made the right decision for our businesses. And I think shifting to go to this place is also the right decision for our businesses. And so I, I really, um, I appreciate people understanding that we're not wishy washy, we're trying to be as flexible and as mobile as possible.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Daniel. Counselor, uh, Brawls, followed by Counselor, uh, Hensley.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I am disappointed that the more restaurants didn't take advantage of this. But that's their business, my question is, I read, I read that Mesa County, I think, ma- made a special request to the state. Because their COVID, uh, numbers were going down. I think they made a special request to go to orange or, or to a different level, what they were at. Can the city, can we make a request to the state? Cause I see our numbers for the last two weeks have gone down. And we, how long would that take, or what would that involve asking the state to give a special permission operated on orange?
So there's, there's two different factors. So the email you had sent me previously was referencing Mesa County's five star program. Um, which is different than requesting to go to a different dial cu- color. So to answer the five star program that's out of Mesa, um, they finalized the parameters of what it means to get that. And when you can apply for it, um, you can apply for it when you are in red. But there is some criteria that you have to meet. Um, it, it, so we need to look into that. I have a meeting with Public Health on Friday to cover a few different things. But this will be one of the items we discuss is, can we get an application in for that? Even if we don't meet the criteria, because once we meet the criteria, we would want it to be able to have, have it happen almost as soon as possible. And what that five star program would mean is for those businesses that meet certain standards. That they could operate at one lower color. So if we're at red, they could operate at orange, when we're orange, they could be at yellow and, and vice versa. I, and so to answer, when we go into a different color, so Public Health, um, would. The, the numbers are what the numbers are, and so they're collecting those, they're reporting those to the state. The last explanation I had was that we need to be at that other level for two weeks. And then we can get moved to the other level. Now, I know we have flattened the curve, so, so we're not going up as much as we were. But I think something that some people missed when the state was putting us at red. Is that some of our numbers were so bad that they were almost in the purple. So even though they are getting better and they're going in the right direction, they still may not qualify us to go to the next level. And so I can get more specific information from Public Health during our meeting on Friday.
Well, the Wall Street Journal had an excellent article, I think it applies to Alamosa and probably a lot of other cities. The headlines was Restaurants Lockdown Massacre. And that the shutdowns punish minorities and low income workers. You know, I think that applies here, we need to do whatever we can to keep those restaurants operating, even at twenty five percent level. So I mean, uh, but if, uh, but if it's gonna jeopardize. Them getting funds as a grant. And I, and as I said, I went to four or five restaurants today and they were all shut down. None of them were open, uh, in fact, Maywas told me that they're closing down until January, they're just gonna close the doors completely. So I'm not sure how to help, to help these restaurants. But on the other hand, I don't want to deprive them of getting, getting three, five, seven thousand dollars, if that's on the table. So that's kind of my thought.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Brawls, Counselor Grego.
Alright, Mayor, thank you, I, I too had an opportunity to visit with some of the restaurants downtown. And I, I thanked them for respecting the law, because a, a lot of them, they came out and said, thank you guys for going to bat for us. But, uh, to jeopardize their licenses is something that, you know, it's a hardship as it is now. And for them to take their licenses would even make it harder. And they, I asked them, well, what, what direction would you want us to go? We would rather get a dollar than get nothing, they said, and hop towards whatever, uh, we can try to survive. So I, I totally agree that, uh, in fact, I would make a motion that would give staff direction to. On the enforcement of, uh, COVID dial, level red and little red level. And, uh, let's go back to the way we were doing it and, and, uh, go ahead and apply for these, this program.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, uh, Counselor Hensley, uh, you have your hand raised. And you had your hand raised before, uh, Counselor Grego made that motion, so I'll go ahead and let you make your comments.
So I'm actually, um, we, we can, well, I'll just state this and then it's, I don't want to get off track too much. But I will say, I forwarded this, um, it just came out today, the city, uh, CML, um, counties, quite a few different. They put a letter to Governor Polis today and recommended that he needs to work better with the communities, with the cities. Um, to be much more transparent, to allow, and in the letter, it's quite a long letter. But in the letter stating the fact that there can't be these blankets, um, sort of decisions and allowing each city. One of the things, there may be more cases, but not, um, they're not as severe. Um, some hospitals aren't as busy as the amount of cases show, some are. And so not, so that idea of really allowing cities to work individually with public health. Versus just having these blanket, um, type of dials that are shutting down businesses just because of certain numbers. So anyway, that did go to Governor Polis today, and it was on the news, it was on nine news, um, this evening. Um, but anyway, so just to sort of talk to David, David about what he brought up. Is hopefully, we'll see Governor Polis hasn't responded yet, but that idea that potentially more real transparency and working together. Is what the hope is. So I just, I'd mention that since that came up.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Hensley, uh, Counselor Carson? You're muted, Counselor Carson.
I understand, um, I, uh. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, whatever my vote is on this. The reason I'm vote the way I, I do is not because I won't support local restaurants and, and the need that they have for money. Cause money's extremely hard to come by, but I just can't support these blanket decisions. That Counselor Hensley was talking about, that, that CML wrote to the, to the governor about. And, and like I've stated before, uh, enough is enough, and you know, there's principles involved here. And, and I, I just want that being stated, because I can't support, I can't support, uh, caving to these. Just off the hip decisions, you know, we were at purple almost, and, and again, purple's hard enforcement. And wanting to again, damage the people of the lowest income brackets by finding people a thousand dollars for being on the street. And so, uh, I just wanted that clarified, I, I, I can't support this, but I wanted to, to make it clear as to why. There's, there's more involved than just, you know, the money for the businesses, and I understand that it's gonna pass anyway. So I, I want, uh, we have to be true to who we are and to what we believe in.
Thank you, Counselor Carson, appreciate that, um, and I just have one brief comment. The only thing that's gonna be constant over the next several months is gonna be change. And I appreciate council and staff being flexible during these times of change, especially when we're, uh, constantly feeling like. We're doing a balancing act between making sure that our residents, uh, health and safety and well-being are considered. And they're protected and also balancing, uh, the needs of our local small businesses. Trying to make sure that we take advantage of any and all opportunities that will provide funding to help them keep their doors open and not closed. So I really appreciate everybody's, uh, flexibility during these, uh, challenging times. So we currently have a motion, we have a second, uh, Counselor Brawls, did you have any?
Well, I just want to clarify that, you know, I'm, uh, the reason I would vote for, you know, going back to enforcement red. Because none of our restaurants took advantage of the orange. And, uh, therefore, it's kind of a new point, they're not gonna open up anyway. So I just want to clarify that, um, and, uh, just for the record, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Brawls. So we have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion, Ms. Martinez, will you please take, uh, the vote?
Sir, uh, Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Brawls?
Yes.
Counselor Grego?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
No.
The motion carried six to one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the, uh, next item on our agenda. Uh, under item three A, uh, first reading of ordinance number twenty eight dash twenty twenty.
Thank you, Mayor, and honestly, the description and background that I plan to review of council, um. Fits for both of these items, they just have to be two separate agenda items. So I won't need to say anything more for the, the second item. But, um, what council real, or what staff realized is minimum wage is going up actually. Um, um, Councilmember Hensley called and asked me about that, and so we looked into it and sure enough, it was. Um, the legislation that we had been following had expired, um, but we did not realize that within the state charter itself. Has, um, and, and multiplier to help keep up with cost of living. And so now that we're aware of that, we'll do a much better job of staying on top of that. But, um, the minimum wage is going up for the state by two point seven percent. In the twenty twenty one, um, budget that council approved. We did a one percent cola that shifted the whole pay plan and everyone's paid by one percent. We indicated that we would watch sales tax to see how it was coming in and maybe mid-year look to see if we could do a little bit more. But that's in the approved twenty twenty one budget. So when we found out that the state's minimum wage is going up two point seven, if we subtract that one percent we've already done. So when we found out that the state's minimum wage is going up two point seven, if we subtract that one percent we've already done, we are still short then by one point seven. And so what would be super easy is if I could just move the whole pay plan one point seven and make, we could call it good. Unfortunately, we don't have enough funding in the budget to be able to do that. And so that's why the recommendation before you tonight in two different items is one, to shift the entire pay plan by point five. Which is something we can afford. Um, it helps to alleviate a little bit of the compression between the different steps. And someone new coming in being that much closer to someone who has more experience. So it, there's two different types of compression it can help with, but we can only afford the point five. So the pay plan adjustment would shift the entire page plan by point five. And then that grade one still needs another one point two, so it would shift grade one up by one point two. So your first item is to make the change to the pay plan itself. The second item is to make the pay effective for existing employees. Um, oh, we did put the numbers in our ten year plan, so that's how we knew what we would be able to afford. Um, a point five percent to the general fund is about forty thousand. What that means to someone, um, if someone's making about thirty thousand, that's about a hundred and fifty dollars annually. Um, is what a point five is. So wanted to provide a little bit of the financial information as well. I am here for any questions on either item. Um, I'm assuming just the pay plan can be first to.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Brooks. I see one hand raised. Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So is it two point seven percent every year or will it just be based on inflation every year? I didn't quite understand that. I'm sorry.
On inflation. I'm sorry, I did not say that very clearly.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Counsel Grego?
Well, this, Mayor, this is the first reading, so if nobody has any questions, I go, I'll go ahead and make a motion that. Best first, uh, we passed ordinance twenty eight. Twenty twenty on first reading and set it for a public hearing on January sixth, twenty twenty one at seven o'clock or sooner after.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Um, I don't see any hands raised. Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counsel Grego?
Yes.
Counsel Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman? Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. So up next is the uh, second motion, motion authorizing the uh, half percent, half percent pay increase. Do we need someone to go ahead and make that motion right now, Ms. Brooks? Okay.
I'll go ahead and make that, Mayor.
Okay, uh, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, I don't see any hands raised. Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counsel Grego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
And Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. Thank you, Council. Up next, we have on the agenda, uh, committee reports. Do we have anybody with any committee reports? Raise your hands and I'll recognize you in the order that your hand is raised. Okay, I I don't see any hands raised, so I do have a committee report. Uh, we did have the Parks and Rec Board meeting the other day and they covered a lot of material, a lot of uh, things that are going on in our community. Uh, even though we're experiencing a lot of uh, issues with the COVID nineteen virus. But uh, in that meeting, we talked about the five-year CIP um, and budget perspective. Uh, we also talked about the work that is being done at the Roparion Park. Um, had conversations about the boat ramps um, and how that that's looking for in the future. Uh, we had uh, conversations about the Montana Zoo Park, Pelican Trail, Blanca Vista Park. Uh, we had a golf course update, uh, which was very helpful as well and 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 also to mention. Uh, the golf course, the restaurant over there is really a good restaurant. I recommend everyone at least go try it and and uh, support them. I was there the other day and and uh, got something to go and the food was very delicious. Uh, but the Parks and Rec Department have been very active during this time. And Andy and his team did a wonderful job sharing all of the different things that they're working on. I'm I'm just excited. Once this COVID nineteen virus is uh, under control, uh, the people in our community are going to have a lot of places to uh, recreate. And uh, enjoy uh, with their friends and their families. But that's all I have on my report.
Here, did you want to touch on the horse controversy?
Um, I really didn't, no.
They did have an issue with horse trails, though, just in the Parks and Rec, or people wanting to ride horses on the walking trails.
And Counselor Carson, thank you for for uh, showing up and Counselor Carson stood in on behalf of Counsel Grego, who can be.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay, that's all I have on the committee reports. Um, so now that'll bring us down to uh, staff updates.
Thank you, Mayor. The only um, item I have, I meant to get an email out um, this morning. Um, but I forgot, so I will send it after this. But the, you may have seen the Facebook post that we went ahead and did issue the advertisement for the ranch property. Um, just as a reminder to everyone, council has not agreed to anything. Um, we have not agreed to sell the property or anything like that. Um, based on the general proposal of interest that you heard from a potential developer. Council indicated you're interested enough to at least solicit proposals. And so um, we may get more than one and it could be that wants you review that information that you're not interested in selling the property. So all we've done is start that process. It's about a three-week um timeframe for individuals to submit a proposal. And we will go through those from a staff perspective and bring it before you, probably in your second meeting in January for a discussion.
Is that the property north of the golf course?
No, it is at the um, by Splash Land off of Highway seventeen.
Okay. Did see that you had to field several questions already.
Yes.
Okay, all right, Dan. Thank you, um, Ms. Brooks for the uh, staff announcement. So now uh, it it comes to uh, council comments. Um, I'll go ahead and uh, recognize all of the hands that are raised. I'm quite sure everybody's going to have something to say, being that this is the last meeting of twenty twenty. Um, so Counselor Hensley, you're up. You're muted right now, Counsel Hensley. You're you're muted.
I get it.
There you go.
Sorry, I had to get my my little cursor over there. Um, I actually first have a question. Um, so I believe on Saturday is the light parade. And so I wanted to ask, because the way it's promoted is that idea of people parking and watching it. And I was just curious how that's going to work. Is it, I just, I I didn't know if we had a little more information on that.
So I I think that's great, um, because that means better social distancing than what we probably could have hoped for. I'm not sure how that works. Um, essentially, from a city perspective, we just wanted to make sure. Similar to what the veterans parade organizers turned turned in, that they they still had those same parameters. And so um, as long as they still have those, which is, um, you know, no throwing of candy, asking people to social distance. Maybe even having marshals who, like, if someone is doing something they shouldn't do, they can have, you know, they can comment on that. But beyond that, going above and beyond that is is up to the organizers, so.
Chief Anderson. We don't have as much, as much involvement in it. It's more where they're doing it.
And we've got the minimum, we've got the floor in order to make sure that it, they will get a parade permit and it meets the COVID restrictions. If they want to go above that, um, then that's up to them.
Okay, thank you for that information. I just was curious where we were at with it. Um, so I mean, I think it's going to be fun. It's such a great parade, so it's nice that that's going. I just want to, I guess I'll be the first since I asked the question, I rose, raised my hand, is, I I want everybody to have wonderful holidays. Um, it's been a trying year, but there's been a lot of good as well and um. You know, I I I try not to look at the negatives and I'm just really thankful for all of us. We have a great city that we live in. I think we've really pulled together on a lot of different um, challenges, a lot of different positive things, obviously challenges as well. But I am just super proud to live in Alamosa. I'm proud to work with each one of you and I just want to wish all of you, I want to wish our staff. Um, all our different departments, um, in our community a great, happy holidays.
Thank you, Counsel Hensley. Okay, up next, we have Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor V Hill, followed by Counselor Brawls, followed by Counsel Grego. Uh, and followed by Counselor Carson. Okay, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the city staff for the lighting ceremony that we had. Uh, it was really fun, even though it was not a lot of people. Um, I think the staff did a really good job. Um, making it as friendly and um. As happy, joyous as possible. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. I also wanted to thank um Helen Sigmund and Darius Allen for their service at the county um. Level as in their January meetings, they are, they will no longer be commissioners. Um, and I think they've done a great job serving our entire county and I've appreciated the partnership um, that we've been able to have with them um, as commissioners. And so I really appreciated that. The, I can't believe twenty twenty is almost over, uh, truthfully. Uh, it has been, uh, I think, an up and down year. What I can say is I've been pleasantly surprised by some of the opportunities we've had to explore. Um, our community's access to outdoors, um, and encouraging people to, even during this more challenging time, to get out and. Do the things that could keep them healthy and more connected to the world around them. Um, in addition, our healthcare partners have had a ton of challenges. And I have appreciated the efforts of our public health department of our hospital, really ensuring that our community has the best care possible. Um, by working together and pulling all of our healthcare organizations together and really sharing information, resources, data. Um, in support for one another, that they do not have um, an easy job at all. So I really, I I want to say happy holidays to everyone. I hope everyone has a safe and relaxed um, holiday. If you celebrate Christmas, if you celebrate New Year's, however your celebration and your family happens for you. Um, I do encourage people to follow the guidance about not being around people who are in your household and having virtual celebrations as much as possible. Um, we know that that is challenging. We know that is difficult, but I did, I wanted to share that that, you know, let's, let's keep everyone healthy and safe. While we're waiting on the vaccine to get to our communities and be able to be widely distributed. So thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you, Counsel Daniel. Appreciate that. Up next, we have Counsel V Hill, followed by Counsel Brawls.
Uh, Ms. Daniel, thank you for those comments. Uh, I want to add to that. That once, once the the vaccine gets down here and when it's my turn, I'm going to take it. That's my personal thoughts. I know they're, and and I do, and I do understand and I get some of the apprehension that might be there about a vaccine. That was able to get done within eight or nine months. Um, that's just a testament to our scientists and our doctors and our. And 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 all the the thousands, the hundreds of thousands of volunteers who took the vaccine in the in the different stages. Uh, to get to where we're at today. So uh, thank those folks. Uh, I want to thank all those people who are working in the hospitals, the nurses, the doctors who are fighting this every day. Um, and I do want to, for the record, just uh, put on there that um. Um, County Commissioner-elect Vern Hearsink was on our meeting tonight and I wanted to just recognize him and tell him thank you for being here. Um, what else? Also, um, I was honored to be. Uh, the graduation speaker for Center High School, uh, the class of twenty twenty. And we had to have the graduation in uh, August. Um, and the biggest, the 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 highlight of my speech was perseverance. And I just want to say that we're all persevering and we're going to get through this together. There's light at the end of the tunnel. That tunnel is getting shorter. We've got to stick together. We've got to care for each other. Um, but there's an end in sight and it's coming, so. Uh, thank you all, everybody, to Heather, Eric, Holly, the whole staff, everybody who works for the City of Alamosa for busting your ass every day. Thank you very much and uh, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas and thank you so very much for those kind words, Counsel V Hill. Okay, up next, we have uh, Counsel Brawls, followed by Counsel Grego and Counsel Carson.
Well, I thank uh, Counselor V Hill for being the first one to take the vaccine. Appreciate that. But I want to tell everybody, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. It's been great working with City Council. I think the, we've accomplished a lot this year. And I want to thank the, thank the staff. The staff's been great. The city staff does a great job. And like to welcome Lisa Sandoval as our new director of finance. Uh, welcome aboard, Lisa. Uh, I think she's a great person and uh, everybody enjoy the holidays with your families and we'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Brawls, I haven't taken the vaccine yet, but when it's my turn, I'm going to take it.
Okay.
Broyles, easy.
Okay, thank you, Council Brawls. Okay, Counsel Grego, followed by Counsel Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a quite a uh, a different year, uh. For all the years that I've been with the the city council, the last big hurrah was the Seminole, Seminole uh, water party and that. That was, but that wasn't, I didn't even touch this and what I want to thank is the the council, the staff, how you come together. How we've stuck together and we have continued moving this this community together. And just talking to people out there, they they see how we're involved and how we care. And what the 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 different things we're doing, not not only for the citizens, but for the businesses, they really appreciate that. And I I think that uh, the job that uh, Heather, all your staff, the city family. Bending over backwards, us as as a group, you know, we 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 don't disagree, we don't agree on a lot of stuff. And but we still come together and we we, we we still respect each other and that's all important, you know. I want to wish everybody a, a happy holiday and I hope everybody stays safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Grego. Appreciate that. Okay, up next, Counsel Carson?
Um, I just wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas and uh. Thank you for hanging in there. It's been a rough year. I know that um, we've all, we've all gone through our own personal roller coasters and public roller coasters with with, along with all our citizens and businesses. So thank you guys for hanging in there and um. I I I wasn't going to make any comments about vaccines or anything, but let's just all remember that it is our body and our choice. Keep that in mind, you know, because we're going to have people that are going to try to, to do that and it is my body and my choice, remember. So thank you, guys. Have a Merry Christmas and let's, let's hope next year's better.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counsel Carson. Well, I guess I'll wrap everything up for twenty twenty, everybody. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank uh, everyone who participated in the lighting cer- ceremony, the council members who showed up. And all of the staff who made everything possible. When you drive around our town, it looks so beautiful uh, with the lights lit up, so thanks to everyone. Also, we were so fortunate that night that it wasn't too cold, but even though it wasn't like freezing cold, guess who showed up? Santa. Santa showed up and I got a quote from Santa. Santa said, Alamosa is his most favorite city in the whole world. That's what Santa said. So I was so excited to see that. Um, but staff, the entire city staff, I was um. First responders, teams, and also our community partners, stakeholders and other uh, elected officials, our city council as a whole. I just want you all to know that I am so thankful and so blessed and honored to be able to work along with you all. And help make our city uh, great and continue to to make it uh, excel in every area. So I wish you all the best. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Um, and I also hope you all have a happy, safe, healthy and prosperous new year. Take care, everybody. Have a super fantastic um, rest of the year and don't let anybody steal your joy and if they do, take it back. Talk to you later. Have a good one. Bye bye, everybody. This meeting is officially adjourned.